Time I'll call our December council meeting to order. Welcome everyone here tonight. We're certainly glad to see everyone and glad that you took the time to come out and be with us tonight. First item on our agenda tonight is invocation by Reverend Tom Legrand. Reverend Legrand?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give thanks unto thee and praise thee for your goodness and for your mercy. It's because of your mercies that we're not consumed. Great is thy faithfulness. Granted to us the riches of your grace. As we look to thee from whence cometh our help. We thank you, God, for this Utah season in which we celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, who came that we might have life and that we may have it more abundantly. God, I pray for our world. I pray for our state. I pray for our community. I pray for the government here in the city of Hamlet, North Carolina. God, I pray that you would provide the resources for development and growth and for the betterment of mankind. For without thee, oh God, we can do nothing. But we know, God, with thee all things are possible. Granted to us your divine favor and bless this community, this government and this county as we celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. Granted, and we shall be careful to give you all the praise, the glory and honor shall be thine. In Christ's name, thank God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Legrand. Counsel at this time you have before the agenda for tonight. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion, changes, additions or deletions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Uh, next item on the agenda is adoption of the November fourteenth, twenty seventeen, regular and closed session minutes. What are your wishes on that?
So moved to approve.
Okay, motion. I have a second. Are there any changes that need to be made to that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. At this time, we come to that portion of our meeting where we have comments from attendees. And this is for anyone who has something that they wish to bring before council that is not on the agenda tonight. To, uh, please come forward and, uh, give us your comments. And I understand that we have a young student from Richmond County who wishes to speak with us tonight. So please come forward. State your name and, uh, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jayden Tillman. I am a resident at Monroe, on Monroe Avenue. And I would like to thank everyone that has played a part in tearing the house down as soon as you come on that road. It has eliminated more, more, um, people go- going up and down the road and I feel safe. But however, with them not be able, being able to get their business done at that area, the street right next to my house, they're starting to pile up there, which causes destruction. And I can't see or I only hear what they're doing and it just makes me feel unsafe from my backyard perspective. I can't go sit on my porch and enjoy myself. And with the trees being there, I can't see what's going on. And I would like to know if y'all could cut down the trees. And however, with the trees, the way my fence is set up, we're getting new fencing and we can't get the fence until the trees are cut down because they have been connected to our fence. And with that fence being there, it, with the trees being there, the fence will not be able to be torn down. So my question for you is, can you cut down the trees that is on that road?
Okay, which street is it that you're talking about now where you're having the problem?
The trees are on.
What, which is the one you're talking about where they're coming up and congregating? What's the name of that street?
The name of that street is Brown Street.
Brown Street, okay. And, uh, the only issue that we would have on that as far as the trees is if it, if the trees are on private property, we can't cut them on private property.
Well, we set a precedent cutting them down here at the, uh, old Raleigh Street a while back. And we can get a, um, some kind of waiver from whoever owns it. But that is a pu- that is a street. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's the, the, the dirt street.
Yeah, it's a dirt street.
In between. There's no houses on the street or whatever. I know exactly what you're talking about. A lot of people use that, uh, for nefarious things to cut through back and forth.
And the city, I know the city uses that street as well. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong Billy, we use that to kind of cut through to go between, we're doing pickups and stuff. And did we find out any information on where they, where some of those trees may fit along the right away for us? Okay. And then, um, I know, uh, I have noticed that they're, they're basically grown over half of that road. So just, you know, if we can kind of see what we can do to correct that issue down there and maybe alleviate some of the, um, people piling up in that area causing.
I must be on dirt street part.
So when you, when you turn on Monroe, it'd be on the right-hand side right there. And that is something good for you guys to know as well. They're kind of congregating down in that area.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're gonna have, uh, our utilities director go over and take a look at it and, uh, look at it on the, on the maps and we'll see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Merry Christmas to you.
I wanna commend you for coming up here in front of the council and voicing your concerns in the community. And I'm very proud of you to come up here and do that. That took a lot of courage. And we will do everything that we can possibly do to make sure that problem gets solved for you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Does anyone else have anything tonight for the council that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving along. At this time, we will, uh, have an update on the city audit by Mr. Ken Anderson. And Ken, we're glad to have you with us tonight. Thank you so much.
And, um, you know, every year I give y'all a little summary of information. I don't go over the whole audit before. But, uh, if you pull that out, we'll go over it briefly. You know, the very, the very top of the page, I have fund balance information for the last, uh, it looks like six years. The first column is the, the general fund. And you can see how over the last, uh, six years, how the fund balance has grown. Uh, this year there was a slight decline. You'll see on the next page, we actually had a slight loss about, uh, sixty-six thousand. The percentage number is there. The local government, uh, commission requires you to have eight percent of, uh, fund balance for, uh, is divided into expenditures, which is effectively one month. And as you can see, you have basically five months, forty point six percent. And it's been pretty consistent throughout six-year period. Then beside that, you have the water sewer fund, which is the, uh, the other major fund here. And as you can see, this is, uh, undesignedated fund balance. It, you can see it's, uh, over the years, it's increased, but this year was a, was a decline. It really wasn't a decline. What we do is we have two numbers. We have a fund balance related to, uh, capital assets. And those numbers sometimes fluctuate. And because of that, the unrestricted or undesignedated actually declined this year. But your overall fund balance was, actually was an increase. Now, if you look at the bottom portion, this is tax collections. And there again, you know, you can see six years' worth of, uh, collections. You've had pretty solid collections. This year was actually the best. Uh, it was up, uh, now last year was, uh, the vehicle tax for last year was not right. That number was really more of ninety-nine, uh, point, I think it was ninety-nine point two-three percent. So you're, you're probably up overall, probably my guess is probably about one percent. But nevertheless, you can see that the, uh, property tax, ninety-six point oh-four percent. That's in line with, uh, state averages somewhere around ninety-six, ninety-seven. And of course, uh, the DMV collects, uh, motor vehicle. So that's gonna approach a hundred percent, uh, the remainder. Anyway, just flip the page here. And it's just a few points on the audit on page one. That's the actual, uh, independent, uh, auditor's report. The, the, uh, city received an un- unmodified opinion, which is in essence, a, a good audit report. Uh, page seventeen, this is the, uh, change in fund balance for the general fund. I, I've actually got that backwards. It's, it's expenditures exceed revenues by, uh, sixty-six thousand dollars. That's why on the front page, if you notice, the, uh, undesignedated fund balance dropped down about fifty. There's some other numbers that involved in that, but nevertheless, fifty-two, sixty-six, that, that's the reason for that. Page nineteen, uh, this is the water sewer fund. And based on the, the full accrual accounting, uh, I actually have that one backwards too. It's actually expenditures exceed revenues, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, we'd point out that there's several components of that. One is the, uh, increase in depreciation expense, which is, uh, non, uh, non-cash expenditure. Last year was about five hundred and twenty thousand. This year was about six hundred and twenty-one thousand. So that's a hundred thousand of the difference between last year. And then there's also, we have to keep up with these, these pension obligations from the state. And when they, when they change, they vary, which in this case, it went up approximately a hundred thousand dollars. We have to net that in with it. Uh, so anyway, that's a part of that, uh, decline in that. Page forty-seven, uh, we have debt. And of course, the, the city has very little debt. You, you start in the first category, governmental activities, this is the general fund. You started out with about a hundred and eighty-five thousand, ended up with a hundred and thirty-nine. So you actually had a decrease in debt there, about forty-six thousand. And in the business type activity, which is water sewer, and that was four hundred and six thousand, three forty-two. That also includes voc- vacation accrual. And it ended up the year with three oh-four. So you actually had a decline in that debt also of about a hundred and, uh, a hundred and one thousand, six fifty-five. Uh, the city's not subject to any, uh, single audits this year. Periodically, we have, uh, a CDBG fund or a PAV bill or something like that that requires us to have other sort of compliance audit. There was, uh, none of that this year. Uh, the report was a little earlier this year. Uh, I think it was October the seventeenth last year. It was mid-November. So we got it done a little quicker. I had a little illness last year. That was part of the problem. But it's been, uh, submitted, accepted by LGC. The annual information report, that's been sent to LGC and that's been accepted. The only difference, if you were to compare this year's report to last year's report, on page forty-nine, there's a, a note on there that this year, that was the first year we were required to have a full-scale actuarial study on the law enforcement officer sep- uh, separation obligation and benefits. And if you were to compare one year for the other, you'll see a lot of additional note disclosure on that. And also a restatement on the financial statements. And that's, uh, related to that. It should be the last note on page forty-nine. And that's about all I have. I mean, uh, I think Jill and everyone here seems to, you know, to getting the information timely seems to be, you know, in good shape and, uh, it's a pleasure to work with the city of Hamlet. And have any questions, I'll see if we try to answer those for you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I don't have any questions, but I'm certainly glad to hear. It's nice to hear the city has very little debt. And, and today's times and all, everything going on. I think that's awesome.
Yeah, a lot of units have a lot of debt and, uh, especially related to the water and the sewer departments. Those are constantly, uh, sources of high debt.
And, um, I know we're not perfect and we got things we gotta do, but, uh, that's still, that's good to hear.
Well, we thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Have a merry Christmas.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
We're moving on into new business. Uh, this time we'll move into doing the oath of office for the mayor and Mr. Martin and Mr. McQueen. And how do you wish to do that, Madam Clerk?
I wish to call you.
Okay. Are you ready? Okay. Next item of business council is, at this time, uh, I would ask for nominations for mayor pro tem.
I nominate Jonathan Bowie to be mayor pro tem or continuing that capacity as mayor co- pro tem.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. And we need an oath of office for the mayor pro tem now. Counsel at this time, I'd ask for an appoint, uh, appointment of city clerk.
I'll make a motion to, uh, keep, uh, Tammy Kirkley as our city clerk.
I second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. Nomination for appointment city coun- city attorney.
I'll make a motion to keep Mr. TC Morpheus and his firm to continue to, uh, stand with the city of Hamlet as they have done and been pretty good at.
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. If you'll look, you have a copy in front of you tonight of the twenty-eighteen Hamlet City Council regularly monthly meeting schedule. And, uh, I would ask for a, uh, motion to approve those dates.
So moved to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Counsel, I would like to ask you also, over the next twenty-nine, the, uh, January meeting, to look at your schedules and see what dates you'll have available in January or February so that we can have a budget work session. So if you all will look at those dates when you come back, we, and we can compare and try to get it all together. Because we certainly need to have that, uh, work session. Uh, at this time, there's a discussion about, uh, doing something for employees and I don't know what the motion is on that.
Um, so after our, um, yearly luncheon with the city employees the other day, it's been a, it's been a very quick year and it kind of came all of a sudden. Um, we've had a lot going on and a lot we've been working on, a lot we've been doing. Um, and, and so when we were in that luncheon, it felt a little odd, different, uh, for, uh, I know at least for myself, uh, being in front of the employees. And every year, we've always had something to, to give them, just kind of a recognition or a thank you for all that they've done. Uh, because I don't think a lot of people realize how much money our directors, uh, our chiefs, both police, fire, our staff, I don't think people really realize how much money they save the city of Hamlet. And I think it, um, goes without saying, and I was certainly glad to hear Ken say it tonight, that the city has very little debt. And without going into all of the things that I know personally, uh, that our chiefs, our staff, our city manager, our department heads, our employees, without going into everything, I know for a fact that they've saved this city money on, not just vehicles, but equipment, the surplus sales and just maintaining all this stuff. I originally came up with a figure, uh, that after kind of thinking about it, I don't think it's good enough. Uh, so I would like to make a motion, uh, to go and, uh, get our city employees each. And that's including part-time employees, a one hundred dollar gift card to use and to give to them as a Christmas bonus and a thank you for all that they do for the city. And that's my, that's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion on it at this time. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a second on it. Is there any further discussion on this?
Just one question. Is that a gift card, is that good for us to give employees tax reasons, things like that?
It is taxable income.
Well, I just, I'm just, I totally agree with what you said. I just wanna make sure we get it the right way.
Well, the manager asked me the same question before the meeting started and I have it, it, very smart, but I haven't had a chance to research it. I mean, obviously, if you gave them cash, that's taxable, it's income. Um, I think a gift card's a little bit more of a gray area. I think the mayor's right that it probably technically is taxable, as is any gift. However, what I would probably say is if you gave a gift card to city employees, say that, you know, you're responsible for the tax on this, if there is any. Um, otherwise, the city's gonna be having to calculate that amount. Um, so it probably is, but I haven't researched if, uh, if it's a small enough amount that it would not be taxed or not.
Jill, do you have an opinion on that?
I was under the impression it is taxable.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you're probably right.
It's better safe than us being sorry in the future.
And, and I think you're exactly right. I mean, I was thinking kind of, you know, if say someone got a box of chocolates or something, it's probably not gonna be taxed. But obviously, a hundred dollar gift card is a thing of value. Um, is there an issue with the city paying the tax that would go on each of the gift cards if that were approved?
I don't know how we go about it. I mean, and how to calculate it. I guess we just send it in.
Yeah.
With the payroll taxes all integrated with our system right now.
So let me ask this question, um, cause I know we talked about, when I ask you about it personally, we, we kind of talked about gift cards. Um, to kind of get around all that. We know that a hundred dollars roughly gonna be around twenty in taxes. I mean, fifteen something.
It's, um, I had Edna calculate this today and we were doing it on fifty, which would be four dollars and fourteen cents in tax. If we were to do a hundred, it would be one hundred and eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay.
For it to come down to an even hundred. So it could be easier, and of course, it's up to council, to just do cash in, in the form of a check as so to avoid the fees with the credit, or the fees with the gift cards. Uh, the clerk and I were talking today. The credit union sells Visa gift cards for two dollars, but.
So let me, I'll retract the motion for the gift cards and I'll make a motion for a hundred and ten dollars to each employee, including part-time, so that it covers the taxes and the employees will not eat that cost. And that's my motion for that.
And this is for full-time and part-time?
Yes.
Full-time and part-time.
Second.
Let's see, I had a second from, uh, Wendy. Was that okay with you?
Eddie just seconded his motion now.
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry. Okay. Is that okay Jill? Is that gonna work? Uh, just tell me. We want to make sure they get a hundred dollars.
Make sure they get. Uh, just make it a hundred and ten even. That way then we make sure that the taxes should be paid on it for that.
Cause we sure do appreciate the work they've done this year. They've really made us look good, uh, the whole city. All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Okay, thank you. Uh, also before us, we have a copy of the tax releases this month. Are there any questions on the, uh, tax releases? I think I've got any anywhere.
Yeah, I think mine, there it is.
One of my attachments I got. It's there. There we go. Okay, you can see that, uh, enterprise fund expenditures, that we didn't have a total increase of eighty-four thousand. And we had a decrease, a total decrease of eighty-four thousand, so that balanced that out. And, uh, that was the enterprise, that was your fund balances. And on the, uh, tax releases, what are your, what are your wishes on tax releases?
So moved to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. And at this point, we will go to our city manager for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that I can speak for all of staff and employees when I thank council and mayor for your generosity in providing the Christmas bonus for this year. It is certainly appreciated. And I know that all the employees, uh, sharing that sentiment, that we certainly, certainly do appreciate your thoughtfulness and your consideration. Also, I want to extend my congratulations to the mayor, the mayor pro tem and councilman McQueen and councilman Martin in their swearing in. This evening, I have certainly enjoyed working with all of you, all of council over this past year, and I look forward to the, to the year ahead. You have all been very cooperative with me as I have adjusted to my role as city manager. And I certainly have appreciated your patience and, uh, the great year that we have had together. The city of Hamlet is going to be closed on Friday, December twenty-second, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth. But there will be no delay in residential garbage pickup for the citizens. If you receive your, uh, trash picked up on Tuesday, it will continue to be picked up on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, also, the city of Hamlet sponsored the Christmas parade last year and it was our first year as the sole sponsor. And there were a few, few hiccups, but for the most part, the parade went very well. I would like to extend my apologies to the, uh, Rockingham Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. They were inadvertently, uh, left off from receiving a personal invitation to the parade. But we have, uh, taken measures to make sure that it does not happen again, uh, next year. And we're certainly looking forward to another successful parade next year. I, on behalf of the city of Hamlet, I want to wish all of the citizens a wonderful Christmas holiday and a wonderful new year. We certainly wish you well and hope that you enjoy your time with your families and being able to, um, travel. We certainly wish you safe travels and to have a wonderful, wonderful Christmas holiday. And Mr. Tillman, we are certainly, certainly glad to have you here tonight. These are your meetings. And anytime there is anything that you would like to discuss, bring to council. We are always glad to hear from you, uh, and any citizen. And we certainly appreciate having you here tonight and, uh, appreciate the auditor being here tonight as well. And that is all I have tonight. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for the manager? If not, we'll, uh, go on and move to comments of council, uh, Mr. McQueen. If not, we'll, uh, go on and move to comments of council, uh, Mr. McQueen.
Yeah, just really quick, um, just like to, uh, thank all of our city employees for the fine job they, they've done this, uh, this calendar year. Um, past couple of months, had, has been, uh, um, a lot of negativity in the paper and in the public and things like that. And y'all did a stellar job, for the most part, of, um, continuing to do your job in a, a very professional manner, and I do, uh, I do want to commend y'all on that as well. Um, personally, from, from me to, uh, city manager, um, I don't think we could've asked for a better year. I think there's no doubt that the council made a, uh, a fine job, uh, did a fine job recommending you to be hired as our city manager. And here again, um, you went through, um, an election season, um, and I'll just leave it at that. Just like, thank you for your professionalism, um, in that as well. I'd just stand, congratulations to Tammy for being appointed as a clerk again, and for Mr. Morpheus with the, um, Bro Law Firm. Um, I've said it before, I'll say it again, that was one of the better moves that, that we have done, um, since I've been back on council. Um, now, one last thing from a personal standpoint, and I would just like to thank the citizens of Hamlet that came out and voted and supported myself, um, and Mr. Mayor Bayless and Councilman Martin. Words can't describe how good it makes you feel when somebody thinks you're doing a good enough job to let you do it again. And, um, through the ups and downs and, um, the pitfalls of the election and all the, the negative things that came out of the election, I think that there's one solid thing that's gonna be on this council's agenda for the next several years, and that's to proceed to make Hamlet a better place. Um, no matter what you may think of the politics or whatever, um, of the council, this council, um, I know I'm dedicated to, to working with the council and, and making sure that, that Hamlet improves, and we can improve on a lot of stuff. We always get up here and say thanks for everything, but we always know we can improve on some things. Um, so sincerely, um, from me, thank you for getting out and, and voting. Um, this one was a little more special for me. Although it's my third term, it's the first time that I've forgotten re-elected consecutively. So that, to me, um, speaks to the fact that the majority of the people in this town, um, are, um, supporting of my decisions that I've made on this council. And I will continue to, to do the job that I think needs to happen for this, for this council and this town. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Ms. Maskey?
No comments.
Comment, okay. Mr. Martin?
Well, I could only, um, reiterate what Council McQueen said. And, uh, that being said, I would just say that, uh, I hope everybody has a, uh, very Merry Christmas this year and a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Bowie?
Um, just kinda echo, uh, Jesse and Eddie's comments. Um, congratulations to Tammy and, um, Councilman Martin, Councilman McQueen again. It's been awesome serving on the board with them. We've done a lot of great things, and I look forward to this entire board working together again, moving into two thousand eighteen and some of the great things that we're gonna make happen then. Um, also, uh, Ken's report, I, I know he's gone, but again, it's just really good to hear him say that this city has very little debt. For a small town, and all the things that we do, uh, that says a lot. So I'm, I'm certainly glad to hear that. Uh, Jaden, thank you again for coming tonight. Appreciate you coming and speaking. Uh, it's not many people, uh, young as you that come in and, and voice things that they have on their mind. And you're where it starts. And I've, Lord, I've known you for quite some time now, and you're, and you're growing, you're getting older on me, making me feel older, but it's really good you came, and you got to meet this board, you got to meet some of our department heads and our chief and our staff, and that, that's good. It's something good for you. And one day, you're gonna be in the White House. I'm putting you there, I'm telling you. You're going. Um, Stephanie, awesome job, parade, the Christmas event down at the depot in the visitor center. I mean, had a really, really good time down there. Um, I was out with the PD, helping them and, uh, blocking cars from trying to, you know, mow us down in the middle of the street. Uh, and then, um, uh, Twisted Treats came and had to back their truck up in the spot 'cause the girl didn't feel comfortable doing that part, so I did that too. I got to make reindeer food with the kids down there in little bags and put cards in it telling them how to do it and what to do and all that stuff to bring the reindeer out to eat and all that, so, uh, that was a lot of fun. Some other interesting events, but at the end of the night, it was really good. We had a pretty good turnout considering the weather, and considering we had to cancel the event Friday night because of the weather. But next year, it'll be awesome to do that again. Ms. Owens, we'll get it, we'll, we'll be right. We're gonna, we're gonna do some extra praying, uh, and Reverend LaGrange, we're gonna bring him in next time too, to pray, make sure we keep the rain away and, and, and so we can at least have that one night, ride the horse and carriage, so. Um, uh, other than that, that's all I have. Uh, congratulations TC, you as well. It's, it's nice to have you guys, you know, back, you know, kind of supporting us and, and representing us. And you've done a really good job for the city of Hamlet. And last but least, just everyone have a, i- it's not just a Merry Christmas, have a safe and Merry Christmas. There's just a lot of things that go on, uh, in today's society and the world, just the way people are and the way they think. So just, just enjoy the time with your family. You never know when it could be the last night, day, or whenever, uh, that you get to see them. So just, just enjoy it and be safe. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Well, it's been a great year in the city of Hamlet. We've done a lot of wonderful things. We've had, uh, things have been dropped on us, and we jumped on it and took care of it. I know it showed a little bit of a drop in the, uh, money this year, but the reason for that was because we had things that had been put off, that we needed to purchase. And it's nice to have all the extra money and the, uh, fund balance, but a lot of times, you got to just jump out here and get new equipment and, uh, that sort of thing. So that, you know, every now and then, it's gonna drop a little bit, but we saw these things that needed to be done, and we went ahead and spent the money and did it. So it's better off for us, uh, uh, the things that, uh, Billy's doing down there with the crew, it's, is greatly appreciated. I appreciate what all the employees do. But biggest thing is I appreciate the people of Hamlet. I appreciate what you do to help the city keep going. We can sit up here all we want to, but if we don't have the, the people in the city of Hamlet backing us up, it's, it's all for naught. Uh, Ms. Owens, Mayor Hamlet Avenue?
Thank you for what you do over there, and thanks to all of those, uh, people over there that are so dedicated, the, uh, all the business owners over there, that regardless of anything else, they're dedicated to make it better over there. I'm sorry that we haven't been able to do anything about your light poles over there yet. We have been, we are at the mercy of Duke Power, and they will not give us a date when they're gonna do anything about it, but the manager stays on them constantly, and they won't give him any kind of information on it. But, uh, Stephanie, thank you for the parade. Uh, it, it was dropped on you, you had something you'd never done before, and it hit you right between the eyes, and you carried through and handled it, so thank you so much. Uh, I'm looking forward, I, all these meetings that I go to, talking to other, uh, agencies and other politicians around the state, and I try to tell them how badly we need industry in Hamlet. And, uh, it's just, uh, i- it's an uphill battle. But hopefully, uh, we'll continue to proceed on, and we'll get some industry in Hamlet. We do have several that people don't really know a whole lot about, that are down on the south side down there, and, uh, they, they're doing a great business, and one, two of them are doing expansions down there. See, and that's, uh, that's great. But, um, let's see, we've covered the days that we're gonna be closed. Uh, and again, I want to remind everybody that that Tuesday, our garbage people are working that Tuesday, so they will be picking up your trash on the regular route. And, um, other than that, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, uh, thank you for supporting me, and anytime you need me, give me a call, I'm in the book. So, thank you.
At this time, if there's no further business, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So I move to adjourn.
Have a motion? Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. And thanks, everyone, for being here tonight.